Always good to see the smiling faces of those people that we represent and welcome tonight to the meeting. As always, we begin our meeting with a prayer and a pledge, so if everyone would please stand at this time. We've got the distinguished Dr. Haney with us for many years with the Carson House Board Directors, and he's going to say our opening prayer tonight, so Dr. Haney, the floor is yours, sir.
Oh God, sovereign of the universe and master of all things human, we give you thanks for the grace that you have bestowed upon us as a people, for the wisdom you grant to leaders. Grant, we pray thee, your continued mercy, as this county deliberates about matters of great import to the people. Now bless us all through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Haney. At this time, Mr. Vaughn will listen to our pledge and flag.
Pledge and pledge.
To the flag. O United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Okay, at this time, we have the minutes before us, and member, board members, you've had opportunity to review these. What's the pleasure of the board concerning approval of the minutes that we have before us?
Move with approve.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye, and opposed like aye. Okay, are there any other additions or deletions by board members or staff to tonight's agenda? There being, and what's the pleasure of the board as far as approving tonight's agenda?
With approve, sir.
Discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye, and opposed like aye. Okay, let's go to our first item on our appointment schedule, and we have our distinguished tax, not oppressor, that's what I would say, but collector. So we have our tax collector with us tonight, Linda Onufray. So Linda, you're here every February. You come before us with some very important information, so the floor is yours.
Okay, I am here tonight to report to the board for all unpaid 2018 property taxes, which are liens on real property, and all that information is contained in this binder you can have there. You also received in your packet the outstanding balance as of January 31st to be, for the real property taxes, to be $1,328,309.34, and that was including county and all districts. We would like, we'd like to do the advertisement. This year, on March 27th, we will send out advertising notices on February 20th, which will give everyone till March 20th, we give them 30 days basically to pay, so their name will not be in the paper. The McDowell News, the quote for the publication would be the same as last year, which is $4,649.40, which comes out to about $2.53 per name, which is charged back to the taxpayer if their name is advertised in the paper, is added back to their tax bill and paid through that way, so we do get the money back into the, to the system. And that's it, really.
Okay, Mr. Williams, any data, sir?
No, sir, I will add, though, if you'll allow me, the tax collection office does a great job, very fair with folks, but there is a process that we're, we have to follow, and they're charged with collecting all the taxes possible, so they do a great job.
Thank you.
Okay, what's the pleasure of board concerning the action we need to take tonight?
Question, will we approve the tax under the page?
Sir.
Okay, discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye, and opposed like aye. Okay, Linda.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, you did an excellent job, and thank your staff, and we appreciate what you do, day in, day out.
Thank you.
All right, let's move to the next item, where we're a little bit ahead scheduled. Let's go to new business and administrative items under A. Mr. Williams, we'll head, sir.
Yes, sir, there are several administrative items, again, these are, can equate the house cleaning, that sort of thing, but I'll just go through the list. The first is a leak adjustment request from the locks residence at our Nebo Water System. You see that amount, $263.56, and you see the receipt as evidence of that leak repair. Mr. DePoyster's here, can't any questions about it. It's okay, we'll just go through each item for the purpose of the minutes. First would be the leak request.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Most approved request.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye, and opposed like aye.
Mr. Williams, sir. The next item, we've had a request from the sheriff's office to donate two vehicles that are surplus to the McDowell High School, the CTE program. These will be used in the, I believe, the auto mechanic area, and then after that, they will be used for emergency rescue, I believe. They're well beyond their years of service and, or surplus, and so you have the resolution in your packet.
Move with approve, second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye, and opposed like aye. Okay?
Okay, the next item, our EMS account write-offs. Addition this month, ask finance director Ms. Bell to provide a memo, since there were some questions last month about our processes, and so you see that, her information as far as the steps that we would take before we get to the write-off. So there are a few steps, that's on page 90. Again, we like the tax office, we work with folks, set up multiple payment plans, but again, they are, much like the tax office, that they have bills to collect, and it's not always pleasant. So there is a collection agency, there is NC debt set-off, which is a program where we can send, send debt to the state, and they will collect against tax refunds, et cetera. There's an estate process, if someone passes away, we'll file a claim on estate. So there's a lot of steps that we go through before to the write-off process. We would ask, these are accounts that we're no longer able to collect, either because they're over 10 years old, the folks are deceased without an estate, et cetera.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Move with approve. Move with approve the write-off.
Discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye, and opposed like aye. Okay, Mr. Williams.
Before the amendments, I did approve a lease with the McKinney family on the Elections Building, 226 South. This is the final lease, it contains the information that you requested as far as sharing costs in HPAC, et cetera, and so it's a little bit different what you approved provisionally a couple of weeks ago, so it is a final document, so we need a final approval on it.
Move with approve. Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye, and opposed like aye. Okay?
You have quite a few amendments, and I can read them all if you would like.
We've been copied, it's been advertised, so you don't have to work that hard on that issue.
Thank you.
Move with approve the amendments. Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye, and opposed like aye. Okay, let's move to item B under new business, the county seal revision. We'll get Mr. Williams.
So probably about six or nine months ago, we have staff-
That used to be in this room, but they're now behind the wall, that work on this channel, and they also do some graphic design for us. We were having a conversation about our current seal, and it was noted that we didn't have a high-resolution version of the seal, which is necessary for, for documents, signage, et cetera, and so the staff, while working on a higher resolution, presented an updated design that I've shown each of you sort of informally to get feedback on, as an alternative slash updated, the seal that was approved in 1993. And so I don't have a copy to show the-
Public assembled, but the board does have this. Again, I can describe it, essentially, the seal, as you can kind of see on the flag, there you go.
I think approved in 1993, Mr. Abernathy. What staff has presented is the same design, so it's not that groundbreaking or earth-shattering, but the, where the county outline was stylized in the 93 seal, this is more of a USGS-type design of the county, so it would be a little more identifiable, oh, that's McDowell County. Outline a little bit better, oriented a little bit differently, but otherwise, the colors are tweaked just a hair, but it plays a strong homage to the, the seal as designed by Ms. Epley back in 93. So again, this is an option, as an update, to tweak it, higher resolution, et cetera.
Okay, board members, comments, questions?
I like it. More perspective, looks more like the county.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move the wick, set.
Okay, got a motion?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye, and opposed like aye. Okay. Let's go to item E, tax matters. Mr. Williams?
Yes, these are routine, tax assessor is here, she had some questions, but much like the EMS write-offs, there are several, eight or nine write-offs for the tax department there at the beginning, but everything else-
Is fairly routine as far as releases over 100, tag office refunds.
Human error, computer error, that sort of thing, pretty typical.
Some are deceased, and some are-
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Most approved.
Got a motion, have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye, and opposed like aye. All right, we've got about two minutes, and we need to adhere to the duly advertised time. Mr. Abernathy is out there saying, "Go ahead, go ahead," and see if we can do anything else.
Board appointments is a first reading?
Okay, let's go there. Mr. Williams, go ahead, sir. Item F.
We have two terms expiring at the Isothermal Plan and Development Commission Board, Mr. Dean Buff and myself.
Our terms expire on April, so this is a first reading, they're not, these are McDowell County slots, but it's not commissioner slash former commissioner or county manager or whatever, we're just representing the county.
We can advertise these if you'd like. I haven't spoken with Mr. Buff, I don't know if Ms. Mitchell has, if he's interested in serving again, but I would be glad to serve if you'd like.
And on that board too, though, the composition is county managers, city managers, and that kind of thing too.
Mostly, and you see commissioners and city council people. Every once in a while, you will have folks from the general public, but it's mostly elected officials and appointed.
Okay, all right, what's the pleasure of the board, Mr. Williams said he wouldn't-
The first reading. There's no big hurry, we can talk to Mr. Buff.
First reading, and then we'll go ahead and take action next month, his second reading. That way, we're still following standard protocol. All right, let's move to our appointment, 5:15 appointment at this time. This is the Carson House project, and we have Mr. Abernathy, who is on the Carson House Board, and actually, are you the director, Chuck?
Chairman.
Chairman, chairman, and we've got several board members present with you, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, so come on up, Mr. Abernathy, and we'll go ahead and hear you gladly.
It's always a pleasure to come back into this, into this room and see the good work that you guys, gentlemen and ladies, are doing, and it's very much appreciated, really is. I do chair the Carson House, the Carson House has a building and grounds committee, which Dr. Haney, Jennings, Bryant, and your own Terry DePoyster, and myself are on, and we really do appreciate Terry, the guy's thinking probably spends all of his time as the county maintenance director, and he's, does other things as well, and really helps us, and it's, it's certainly appreciated. The Carson House was built in the 1790s, it is truly a gem to the county, it was the original seat of county government, the county commissioners meet annually, and hold a commissioners' meeting in October. People like Andrew Jackson and Davy Crockett visited the house, it's, it's really very special. It has four chimneys, and one of those chimneys is separating from the house. Dr. Haney is going to give you a history of, of the chimney. And Jennings Bryant is going to talk about a grant that we're applying for, and then I'll come back and, and talk about numbers. But we, we did get a quote on repairing the chimney, and it is imminent, it's not a, a matter of will it fall, but only a matter of when, and Jim can tell you about the, the damage that, that would likely be done, but the, but the estimate, or not the estimate, the proposal that was received was $56,000. When I put the memo together, and Paula Avery is here as well, she's on another matter, but she's also on the board, but we, we've got a proposal to fix the chimney for $56,000, and then another $14,000 that the board is going to consider to do some repairs to the other three chimneys while we've got the person in there to do it, so that's still a- Still a decision to be made. So if it's all right, I'll recognize Dr. Haney.
Yes, sir. Welcome, Dr. Haney.
Thank you.
Mr. Commissioners, and lady, it's a pleasure to be back here again, as you know, this is not my first appearance, begging for something for the historic Carson House. When I joined the board about 17 years ago, if I recollect properly, about the third meeting, I almost resigned, because I was confronted with a list of must-dos to be taken care of, and over those 17 years, most of those, indeed with considerable help from county commissioners, those items have been taken care of. But one item has been put off time and time again, and that is this chimney, to which Mr. Abernathy referred. I learned back then that an effort had been made in, between 1986 and 1987, when some major renovations were made on the house to tackle the chimney problem, and a company was employed to do that, they decided that they would try to straighten the chimney by digging underneath and giving further support to the foundations. They began their project, and to their horror, the chimney began to lean even worse. And so they plugged up what they had done and stopped. Now, I was told that at that point, the chimney was leaning 14 inches off the plumb. They took off some of the brick at the top and tried, and put a curve in the chimney to curve it back toward the house, but that has not worked, and over the years, the chimney has consistently slowly moved away from the house, some four or five inches, and in the last five years, after myself and another board member did some replastering on the interior fireplace, another half inch or so has, has opened up. Now, we're concerned primarily, I guess, because the gentleman that we had recently to assess the situation, I've noted that the wall against which this chimney sits is bow, is bowing outward, so apparently the chimney, with its connection to the two fireplaces inside, is pulling the side of the house toward the creek at the chimney. So that, we fear, if we neglect this too long, if it falls, it won't be just a matter of a falling chimney, but taking the east end of the house with it as well. I am personally concerned in that, given the fact that in the past year, we have had an unusual amount of rainfall in this county, and we have had threats of severe flooding, this ground is not getting any harder, or is the foundation getting any more secure, so we have pushed ahead and said, we've got to go ahead with this project, so we come to you asking for help. One other small note, those of you who have visited the house know that at some point in its history, the corner of the parlor where you people, I'm sorry, the dining room, where you people usually meet, is, has sunk down some six inches or so at some point in history. Now, I mention that because this chimney that is leaning is located only about four to five feet away from that location on the corner of the house, so I'm afraid there is a major problem in, underground, so that's the groom situation. Thank you.
We just wanted you to know that we are also putting forward a grant proposal to the Marion Stedman Covington Foundation out of Greensboro. They deal with historic properties and are into the restoration support business, but they like to see a lot of ground roots, grassroots support coming forward, and that's one reason we come to you now, because we need to show them what else is being done locally that will provide support as well. So we, we will be putting forward this proposal and optimistic, because they do fund this kind of work, so. Any questions?
Okay.
I've got one more.
Okay.
It's, it's okay. Okay, so I will hurry. We've been showing pictures, there's, for example, a picture of the, of the mantle, and you can see the crack that runs the entire length.
Just one picture.
Yeah, there's a close-up of that. Another one, okay. There you go, there's the, the chimney, and you'll see the, the sky right there, where the, the red dot is, where the separation has, has occurred, so it's really quite, quite serious. So to conclude, we've, what, what we're looking to do, and obviously, my memo to you said $40,000, so we, we were, really knew it would be more than that, and it, and it was, so we, we're in deeper than we, we thought, but what we, what we wanted to ask of the commissioners, the funding plan is if, if we could receive $10,000 from McDowell County, spread over two fiscal years, $10,000 from TDA, the Covington Foundation is capped at 20, and it is due the end of-
The first of March.
The first of March, so we'll, we'll know pretty quick on that, and again, as, as Jennings said, they, they want to see, the reason really we're here is they want funding commitment letters to go, to go in with the, with the grant. We may ask the City of Marion for a very small amount, even though it's not in, in their jurisdiction, and then we're going to have to grill hamburgers.
The city and the county partner very well together on lots of projects, I'm sure they would love to have this presentation over there also.
And we may have to borrow some money and grill some hamburgers. So the request is, you, you budgeted the, the regular allocation to the Carson House, which is appreciated, you budgeted an additional $5,000 this year to celebrate the 175th, so what we're asking is that you simply replace the $5,000 for two more years.
Right, yeah, I'll say something real quick. And that's, in, in, in our county budget, that, that's nothing, just to be honest with you, the request is before us tonight. Couple things about the Carson House, the, the history that is out there, the artifacts within the house, the original artifacts, the history, I know educationally speaking, the third, is it third graders, what, who?
Fourth.
Fourth graders go out there, countywide, all fourth graders go visit every year the, the Carson House, and the board directors has done an excellent job in, with limited funding, limited funding, because basically, they go out there, people can leave a donation if they want to, but it's, it's a free tour, so to speak, and, you know, the Jubilee Arbor, the, the board commissioners were very happy to partner with, with you guys on that, that project, that is provide, I've been to three weddings out there, and excellent spot for weddings, reunions, a host of activities, so the board is so glad we were able to partner with you on that, and so I think it's just a preservation, and more damage will occur, because when that chimney comes off, it's going to start tearing parts of that house off with it, right? We saw that in our memo, so I think that you guys are doing a great job as the board directors, and, and I appreciate what you're doing.
I move to re-grant the request.
Got a motion?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye, and opposed like aye. Okay, thanks for coming before us, and thank you for letting us hear an update tonight. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll go ahead and move on to our five, 5:30 appointment, let's go ahead and- And at this time, I would declare the board in a public hearing setting, Mr. Abernathy come forward, sir, and he's here concerning a economic development project, so the floor is yours, Mr. Abernathy.
I apologize for disturbing you twice in one evening. Okay, so we've got an economic development project, North Carolina State Law, 158.7, says that anytime a city or a county is considering granting incentives to a, a private entity, that a public hearing has to be held, and as much information as can be disclosed, be disclosed on that, on that matter, to the, the action being, being finalized. So that's what, that's basically what we're doing, and you've, you've declared us in, in public hearing. What the law requires is that the, that the number of jobs and the investment be, be disclosed, the nature of the company, which I can talk about the nature of it, what, what the company does, cannot name the company, but I can, I can give quite a bit of, of information on it, and we'll, and we'll do so. So if it's okay, I'll give you an overview, and then you can receive, you can receive comment. The company is, is an existing company in a, in another state, it's a plastics company that manufactures variety of projects, products, primarily for Wayfair and, and Etsy. So the product is mainly sold online, although if it locates here, he said he, that he would do a showroom in, in McDowell County. The product is mainly plastic patio furniture, ader-. The product is mainly plastic patio furniture, Adirondack chairs, that kind of product. He would employ 30 people to start with, and that number, he says, would likely go quite a bit higher. The investment initially would be about $1 million and a half. So it's like CNC machining that you're familiar with in metalworking, except it's basically a plastic product that's produced. There's some other products as well that he's considering producing here. He wants to live here. He wants to live. The reason we're getting the consideration is the desire that he has to leave the state he's in and to come to western North Carolina. So that makes it, gives us some advantage when you see that, and somebody wants to be here. So it gives us that advantage. The incentive that's being offered, and this keeps getting, I think back to how we used to do this, and what we used to give, and things are so positive and competitive, or non-competitive actually, right now, but so positive, that the amount of the incentive being required just keeps lessening and lessening. And so I go up and down with what I discuss based on, you know, how firm I think things are. And so what we're offering with this, the Universal Building has a 40,000 square foot section that is currently vacant. And we've routinely, in the past, done free space in the building, for example. We're basically discounting the space to a dollar a foot for a year, so the incentive would be between 30 to 40. I noticed your public hearing, and that's my fault. Says 30, it would fall between 30 to 40,000, because it's a 40,000 square foot section, and a dollar a foot, and our normal rate is $2. So the incentive would be between 30 to 40. So you're getting money right out of the gate on it. Now, we're going to do two grants with the state of North Carolina. One is called the One North Carolina Fund, and we're now a Tier 2 county, and so the incentive offered is not what it was. It's now $10,000 a job. So we would be looking at that number coming from the... What did I just say? 10? Two. My fault. That's the other program. $2,000 a job for one NC. The county has to match that 50% or a dollar, and so your reduced lease basically meets the match. So you'd have no money in it. The building reuse, which is the program that we've made the most use of, we had four or five projects last year that made use of the building reuse program. That one is 10 grand per job, and is used to outfit buildings where there is job creation and investment. There is a 50% match on that. So he would be eligible for $300,000. So that's a discussion that we have to have. Between him, if he locates here, the owner of the building, which is you, and the $30,000 to $40,000 that we've already got in it as an incentive, how much do we want to, do we want to outfit that space? And that's a question that's not answered. He's putting design together for offices, restrooms, a ramp. There's some electrical work, floor painted, and the walls painted. So there's quite a bit of work there. We can put that on him and hope it works, or as the owner of the building, we might come up. So that's still to be resolved. Tempted to say something like this, though, that we would do a small amount, and that he's going to be responsible for everything else. We'll see if that works.
Okay, at this time, you've heard from the Economic Development Coordinator for McDowell County.
And we'll start on this side of the room, and if anybody wishes to comment on the information you've heard tonight, feel free to do so. We'll start on the first row. Just state your name, and we'll go ahead and you state what you want to say. So is there anybody on the first row wishes to speak? Okay, second row. Yes, sir.
David Ochen. Is there going to be any environmental impact that this building will have on the county?
No, it's a good question. And this is a question that we ask real quick, because again, a lot of times, we don't know who we're dealing, sometimes I don't know who we're dealing with, with a company. So we, that does happen. But in this example, there would be no environmental impact, and if there was one, we get real nervous about that.
Thank you, David. Anybody else on the second row wishes to speak? Third row.
All right, let's go this side of the room. Anybody on the first row? Anybody on the second row? All right. Third row. And the last row. All right. You must have done a good job explaining that, Chuck. Do I hear a motion from our Board to go out of the public hearing? Second, discussion, all in favor, say aye. In opposed light side. Mr. Winkle, go ahead and add comment to this, sir.
I've met the gentleman, he did say male, so I can say that. The gentleman with the project, and very impressive. Obviously, Mr. Aberath is working a lot more, but since it's a great product, great fit for our community, you can say, Mr. Aberath has laid out the incentive. We definitely like building reuse projects, because a lot of state participation financially in that, and I think we have four active ones right now. So a lot of growth in the county in that area, and it's a great direction to go.
Okay, other board members, any comments about board members?
I like the idea of creating at least 30 more jobs for folks in McDowell County. I know that we've got one of the lowest unemployment rates in the state.
Second lowest unemployment rate.
But at least, we're still moving in that direction to provide jobs for our people locally.
A lot of activity, and a lot of commercial activity. Really is.
I would add that a dollar a foot is a great deal for him.
It is a 250...
Realize it or not.
$2 is a good deal. 250 is pretty much the rate.
Great deal.
And that was a good move on your part to negotiate, no cash, cut me, just reduction of the list rate.
List rate, yeah.
Like that.
Diverse economic opportunities for people in McDowell County. Here again, this county traditionally, historically, was manufacturing being furniture and textiles. And when that left us back in, what, '02, this county got hit hard. So great, diverse opportunities, and our Board appreciates that. And we got a building down there that's fully leased now. That means that Universal Building is fully leased, generating revenue to sustain the operations that go on in that building.
We actually had the second highest unemployment rate in the state of North Carolina in the recession. So that keeps us much of the...
And looking back, Chuck, too, you know, when we had the textiles, the furniture companies here.
We were in the top 2% of the state then, for...
There was a time when we were one of the top 20 counties in the nation, as a percentage of over 3,500 counties, and we were in the top 20 as far as percentage of workforce employed in manufacturing.
We've got a lot to be proud of here in this county.
We've been here.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the Board concerning the incentive as presented by staff and Mr. Sabaneth?
We approve, so.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye in opposed light side. Here again, McDowell County is open for business. It's a great place to live, to work, and to raise your families. So anybody watching, if you're in a motel right now, a week from now, and you see this meeting, stay with us a while, okay? All right, let's go ahead and move on to the next item on our agenda. This would be, we're slightly ahead, let's see if we can do one other item before we go to our 5:45 appointment.
This will be the, let's go to item A, under Old Business Shooting Range Update. Mr. Winkle, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. As you see in the memo, about a month ago, Commissioner Brown, myself, Mr. Armour, and Ms. Melton from the Plenary Department met with a representative from North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission to get an update on where the public shooting range project stands. And so Mr. Gardner, his name, who was in the area from Raleigh, he gave an update. And it's been a while since we've talked about it, but to remind you, the way those ranges are built is typically with federal money. It's a federal grant program, and the state looks for grant matches. They have to match the grant, I believe, at 25%. Typically, they like to, we do the same, you saw some of that tonight, we like to do those matches with in-kind contributions. In this case, they had talked about ideally donating, the county donating a portion of the property there at Ashworth Road to the state, and that being that grant match. So in order to process that sort of transaction, the state had to order an appraisal. One appraisal came in, and you've got that here before you, unfortunately, as it's appraised by that appraiser, they would not have enough value in that property to meet the match. So without looking for other sources of funding as of yet, the discussion with the wildlife officer was, the county has the option to order a second appraisal, second opinion, before we start looking under rocks or other avenues for funding. And so with the thought that maybe another appraisal will come in higher, that would make the average, and hopefully hit the... Target on the match. So if you approve that, there's a process we would have to follow for the state, but we would gladly do so. It's been a while since we've done an appraisal, but they're fairly reasonable.
That appraisal came in really low, in my opinion, and, you know, it would be my suggestion to the Board that we get another appraisal.
Okay, you want to make that for a motion?
I'd like to make that a motion tonight.
Okay, you have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second? Second, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye in opposed light side. Okay, that's what we'll do, just when you have direction on that. Now, at this time, let's go ahead and move to our 5:45 appointment. This is the Health Coalition update. We have Zach Wallace with us tonight, and others related to this topic. So, Mr. Wallace, welcome to the boardroom. We hear you gladly.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. And like you said, I'm Zach Wallace. I'm the Executive Director of the McDowell County Health Coalition. It really is an honor to be here with all of you, and it's an honor to represent the Coalition here. Just wanted to thank County Manager Ashley Wooten for inviting me, and also for his service as a member of the Health Coalition Board. His input and guidance has been instrumental for the Coalition, as has the funding that this Board has allocated in the past. That support and funding has shown significant buy-in from the county, and it allows us, when we go, kind of like they talked about with the Carson House, when we go to grant makers, we can show that you all are bought in, and that the community is bought in. And I think it really opens up quite a bit of money for us. I do have a few board members who are here tonight. If it's okay, I'd like to recognize them. Mr. Ray McKesson, who's our chairman, is here. Ms. Donna Good, who's the vice chair. Ms. Kitty Wilson is in here. Molly Sandfoss and Dr. Beverly Watts are all here for this and for some other projects that you're going to hear about. Just a little bit of background on the Health Coalition and where we see ourselves going. We're a nonprofit established in 2014 with the goal of making McDowell County the healthiest rural county in North Carolina. The way that we do that work has changed over the past five years, but that goal remains the same. As we go into the fifth year of the Coalition, we're working to improve health and well-being by being an incubator and booster of current programming, participating in the community health assessment process, and by acting as a connector between the community, local service providers, local government, and other nonprofits. In our role as an incubator and promoter, the Health Coalition is able to help new health-based projects get started. We can help find funding, gain institutional support, and navigate through required red tape that new projects face. Some of the programs that the Coalition have played a role in include MATCH, which connects residents to health insurance and primary care, and Workforce Wellness, which is a workplace-based wellness program targeted at our manufacturing facilities in the county. We're also working to promote existing programs and resources in the community. That's something that I hear a lot, just talking to service providers, talking to citizens, that they see that as a barrier, that you have these resources, but they don't know about them. The way that I think about that, in my free time, I really like to duck hunt, and every year, I feel like I need the newest stuff. I need some new decoys, I need the newest camo. You could look in my garage and see all of that sitting there. And I always think that that new thing is going to be the thing that makes this year different. All of you living here in western North Carolina know there's not a lot of ducks. But you think, this is the thing that's going to push me over the top. And a friend that I hunt with has always told me, you know, no matter what you have, if you don't know where the ducks are, it doesn't matter. You're just out there with that new shotgun standing. And so what we're trying to do is show citizens all the amazing resources that are in the county, because there are some really great programs that are happening, but if they're not being utilized, then they're not working. We're also working to create and disseminate resource guides so that our service providers can more easily refer citizens to other resources, and marketing tools so that citizens know what resources are there, so they can better connect to their community and be healthier. Every three years, as mandated by state law, our county undergoes the community health assessment, and the Coalition is proud to work with Mission McDowell and the Health District to complete that process. It's a data collection process, and a report that's made with suggestions for policymakers like you and for regular citizens, just to see where the community is health-wise, and also to highlight some top priorities. That final report, all the data has been collected. That final report should be completed in the next month or two, and when it is completed, I'd be glad to bring it to you and go through it if that's something that you'd like. Out of that report, or out of the data, the two priorities that really came to the top were mental health and suicide prevention as one, and substance use as the other. After identifying those priorities, the Coalition's able to host community events, such as our annual meeting in December, where these priorities are discussed and possible strategies are suggested by the public. The reason that those two priorities were chosen, just based on some of the statistics, we have a rising number of citizens, almost a quarter, who report at least seven days of poor mental health a month, which is up 4% from 2015, and is almost seven points higher than our region. 15% of our residents who reported not getting needed mental health care within the past year, which is up 7% from 2015. 18% of our citizens who reported using an opiate or opioid in the past year, and that's with or without a prescription, with over 4 million opioid pills being dispensed in McDowell County in 2017. Almost half of our citizens who were surveyed reported their life being negatively affected by their own substance use or the substance use of others. Just a nationwide number that kind of can blow you away. The fact that an American is more likely to die from an opioid overdose than a car wreck. And here in McDowell County, a group that I think about a lot, my age group, from 20 to 39, the two leading causes of death are unintentional injuries, which includes overdoses and suicides. And so taking that, we can push them to the top and say that they're priorities, but we want to make sure that it's not just pointing them out, that we're taking it the next step and actually doing something about it. And I know that you all know, and most of our citizens know, that those are huge issues in the county. We didn't need some of that data to tell us that. One of the ways that we're trying to move forward on those issues, we have a substance use work group that was formerly led by our sheriff, and is now led by Danny Hampton over at Freedom Life. And we're working in partnership with the Kate B. Reynolds Foundation and the University of North Carolina System on a three-year project, and that project started in January. The goal is to map resources, identify gaps in those resources, and then propose and implement strategies around substance use in the county. The Coalition, through board members and staff, will be working with those researchers from UNC Chapel Hill and UNC Asheville to make sure that they're getting the information that they need, and that they're connecting with the right people in the county for any that they need and that they're connecting with the right people in the county for any other information that they need. And we want to make sure that that three-year project, that solutions come out and that you can see them being worked on in the county. We want to make sure that it's not more meetings to talk about what's happening and no solutions. Using this technical assistance, we'll be able to more effectively market resources to the community and also help other groups who are working on related issues, including the newly formed Reentry Council that's working to remove barriers for those who are coming out of the criminal justice system so that they can come back into our community and be contributing citizens. And then also working with the Economic Development Association, which has identified substance use as one of the issues in filling open positions here in the county. So those are some of the ways that we're acting as a connector. We also act as a connector through our 25-member board, highlighted some of those who were here. It also includes representatives from the city, law enforcement, other nonprofits, our school system, and the hospital. By bringing that group of people together bi-monthly to share information, gather needed resources, and ensure that efforts are not being duplicated, you know, we really hope that the information is going back to their institutions and is being put into practice. I want to again, thank you all for giving me the chance to come up and talk with you. Since taking this job in September, I've really enjoyed getting to know this community better. I'm excited about the dedication that I see, you know, daily from citizens, government officials, business owners, and especially my board members. Anytime that I've asked for assistance, every person I've asked has said yes. And sometimes they've gone beyond what I asked for and said, let me help you in another way. They've given their time, they've given their effort, and they've given their money. One of the other stories, I told you about duck hunting, another thing that I think of quite often, when President Kennedy talked about his commitment to an issue, he would tell a story about young men crossing the Irish countryside and they would come to these brick walls, 11, 12-foot tall, that separated different properties. And when they would get to them, they would have to decide, are we going to walk down the road and go around this wall or are we going to go over it? So they'd all stand there and try to decide as young men will do, probably loudly and nobody really leading, until one of them would take his cap off and he would throw it over the wall. And they would look at him and everyone would follow. At that point, they knew they had to go over the wall. They didn't have their caps and they needed to get them. They didn't know, you know, how dangerous it was going to be or what was going to be on the other side. So when I think about the work that we're doing and that, you know, this is for my children and for your children and really for all the citizens of McDowell County, I want you all to know that the Health Coalition, the board, and myself are wanting to toss our caps over the wall. And we're excited to work with you, we're excited to work with the community in working on some of these issues. I really thank you again for your support and for your time. Be happy to answer any questions and gather any information that I don't have that could be useful for you all.
Okay, Zach, listen, great presentation and there's a lot of things we've got to work on and we see that in the report. And one good thing is you've got a lot of different people and a lot of different groups in McDowell County that's going to do that. And so, but we appreciate the presentation. Mr. Wooten, anything you need to add or board members' comments or questions?
I've got one question. As far as substance abuse here in McDowell County, do you have any stats on when you compare McDowell County to the other 99 counties in the state?
Um, I can get that for you. Especially from North Carolina, has a database that shows, that's where I got how many pills were dispensed. So they'll show you that and it'll also show overdose deaths. And so that is just around opioids. I would say that, you know, it is good to try to think about substance use, you know, all the way, not just opioids, but I'd be glad to get that information for you.
Yeah, I'd be interested in knowing that. We get a bad rap from some of the other surrounding counties, you know, they've nicknamed us very repulsive names. I'm not going to say those, but I would be interested in knowing that.
Yes, sir. And I know that when speaking with the sheriff, he always tells me, you know, that was a result of enforcement. It was, they were going out there and getting it and that's why you see it in the newspaper. Maybe not because we're worse off or better than others.
Okay, no other comments from board members. Zach, thanks so much for being here and we look forward to hearing from you in the future.
All right, thank you.
All right, let's go ahead and move to item B under O-Busess. This will be the Stacy Hill Road Water Project Update. Mr. Wooten, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. A quick update on this project. We are pretty much at the finish line for the project. Mr. De Poiser has indicated that the section on Stacy Hill Road should be complete by the end of this week, so we'll try to get a press release out on that. And we have, last count, I think 22 applications that have been turned in. And we're just going to go down the line as they were received and process those, so that's a great indication of how already, how much needed that line was. And so we'll have a transfer of the master meter there on 70 that'll take place, I believe, this weekend. So it's pretty much done. There is an action item tonight. Believe you've indicated previously that you would waive the connection fees for six-month period. And so now that we have the actual time, we'd like to put that in writing. And so you have that in front of you, beginning on March 1st or before, but definitely March 1st through August 31st. Ask for a waiver of any meter drop fees is what we call it, since there are already meter boxes at these homes. And then after August 31st, they would have to pay the drop fee at that point, is what we're asking. You've done that traditionally with all our other projects.
Comments or questions by board members?
Will the residents be notified by letter or how will that notification?
We will do a notification tomorrow with those dates if you approve them as such.
Door to door. Who will approve the waiver?
Second, second. Discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye in opposed light sign. Okay, thank you, Jim. Let's move to item C under new business, the Trail Agreement. Mr. Wooten?
Yes, sir. You have in front of you a draft agreement, still in draft stage, between the City of Marion, McDowell County, and the McDowell Trails Association. And this agreement came about after a meeting a month or so ago with the Trails Association and the city. There is a desire between all three parties to have a more of a partnership, collaboration when it comes to trail projects, especially in and around the City of Marion since the city's involved. And also. Between us and the Trails Association, Town of Old Fort, whoever else. But this agreement primarily is centered around common interest around the city, maybe even more specifically around the Greenway along the river. And so what you have has been shared with the City of Marion and the Trails Association leadership. Mr. Pierce, who is the president of MTA, is out of the country on a mission trip, but I did talk to Mr. Boyett and he's had some discussion with this agreement with the city council. But what it would do is essentially enter local agreement. It would, again, strengthen the partnership between the three partners. Talks about quarterly meetings between representatives from the three to talk about planning for future trail extensions. Especially in the area of the city. Talks about financial contributions, et cetera. But one of the innovative areas that I think give credit to the chairman was a cost-sharing arrangement, especially between the city and the county, where if the city, and again, this would have to be a designated section. So in the city's case, it would be Phase 1 and Phase 2 that they've had open for a number of years. If there was damage in that section of Greenway, there would be a cost share where the county would assist with repairs after federal, state funds, et cetera, are exhausted. Likewise with any Greenway sections, the county builds, again, in a delineated area, if we had damage, there would be a cost share agreement where the city would help us out. So a little bit of scratch each other's back a little bit, but at the end of the day. The goal was to help repair some damage from storms quicker and more efficiently, perhaps. And so again, this is a draft. It's been to Mr. Pierce and Mr. Boyett. Mr. Boyett shared, again, with city council, but it's not been voted on by them. If you wanted to take time and treat this as a first reading, I think that would be acceptable, definitely. Time to go back and think about it.
Kay, what's the pleasure of the board? First reading, first reading. All right, and we'll have it back on the agenda next month. One thing that I did want to mention is the 104 inches of rain this past year. It's hard to budget when you do your budget a year out to anticipate that. So the city and the county, for everybody in the room tonight, the city and the county work well together and we want to make sure that city residents and county residents use trails within the city limits. So it's good moving forward to try to work out some type of agreement to where we can assist when all other funds have been exhausted, because we are coming up on construction of our phase that's going to run right beside that same river. And so when it floods on the city's sections, we're going to have probably flooding on our section. So it's good for us to sit down and work out with the Trails Group. The Trails Group really want to be a player here with both boards and so I just appreciate both boards and the Trails Organization coming together. Here again, for everybody who is in the room, another example of partnerships. How do small counties get things done? People working together, boards working together, and y'all volunteering on a lot of the boards. You know, we've got the Health Coalition tonight, we've got the Community Engagement Report coming up tonight, and y'all are working out there and doing a lot of work. And so our board, we don't take that lightly and we appreciate the community involvement. And, you know, Zach's from outside our community, he sees it. And you're going to see the same kind of partnerships and corporations, not just on the trails project, but with the schools, with a new school, you're going to see it with the college. And so we appreciate all the different boards and everybody here tonight. And so this will be back on our agenda next month and the board will take action then, okay? All right, thank you, board members. Let's move to item, let's go ahead and do our next appointment item. Let's go to 6 o'clock and let's move to the Appointment Item E. This is the Community Engagement Report. We have Ginger Webb with us tonight. So Ginger, welcome to the boardroom and come on up at whoever's with you and we hear you glad.
Good evening. I have with me Paula Avery. Paula Avery is the Executive Director of the West Marion Community Forum Incorporated. I want to say thank you to the Board of Commissioners for allowing us tonight. Thank you, Mr. Wooten. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and all of the board. We really do appreciate having this opportunity to share this report with you and share what we are seeing, to your point, Chairman, from the residents in our communities. Is this our booker?
Yeah.
So our report is titled, "Recommendations for a Healthier, Resilient, and Inclusive McDowell County, North Carolina." And this is a partnership between the West Marion Community Forum. You see their logo, Old Fort would be next. They are going to be coming up with a logo soon. We work directly with the schools, the graphics department there to help come up with those logos. That's just kind of a placeholder for them right now, Marion East Community Forum and then Century Nito Latino Americano.
Go down. Okay, so every month, we usually take a break in the summer and the winter, but we host monthly forums and they provide us a safe space for residents to develop a shared vision for their neighborhoods, engage in open and honest dialogue about their challenges, barriers, build relationships, and develop plans for action. So basically what we do is we invite people in, and I just want to say, you know, sometime people think whenever you get in a community together, it's going to be an uprising, but because we kind of run into that in Old Fort a little bit, but we are just here to. So, I mean, we're here to just listen to the people and just figure out how we can make our communities better.
So the value of our partnership, what grassroots partners bring to the table, and what we mean by grassroots, it's residents that are historically excluded or underrepresented, community members whose voices and ideas are often missing from decision-making tables. They're not invited to some of these boards and some of these places where a lot of decisions get made. So we bring research and on-the-ground knowledge by living and working in these communities. We bring new strategy efforts to best reach people directly impacted by the issues. We make the issues real for institutions to understand with on-the-ground expertise to the realities facing these communities. We bring new ideas, new solutions, new ways of thinking, and we help institutions get out of their silos and how they traditionally see things. We bring that direct channel of outreach to communities. So it's those people-to-people relationships. And we have social capital. When we see these people month after month, we develop actual trusting relationships with all of the leaders in these grassroots communities. We bring feasibility and sustainability to institutional strategies. The community is going to let you know if something's going to work or if something's not. They're the ones that live there, they know. And our leaders are passionate, driven, and motivated to make positive changes. And we just really feel like together, all of us, working together, united, can make a more inclusive and healthy McDowell County.
So this is a list of our Community Engagement Steering Committee. As you can see, it's a very diverse group of people, from Dr. Watts and then Kula, just youth empowerment. And what we've done, we try to get somewhat a representative to represent each part of the county so we can get a different voice from every one.
So what is the purpose of this report? This report is to share the recommendations for these positive health improvements relating to the following 10 issues: housing, transportation, childcare, food and farming, food insecurity, active living, youth engagement, substance use disorder, economic development, public safety. These are social determinants of health. This is a term you're going to hear more and more often. When people struggle and have barriers with these social determinants of health, it directly affects their health. So this is why we have come up with these recommendations. And this is not an exhaustive report. This is just a starting place for us to start having more and more conversations about how we can all work together.
And so I just wanted to say, we have some Community Engagement people here, some foreign people. Could you raise your hand so we know you're here? See, that's the whole group. And also, when we met with Mr. Wooten the other week, he asked a good question, I think it was justified. He was like, where are you getting this data that you're reporting? So. We didn't want to be Paula and Ginger sitting down at the kitchen table making up stuff. So first, we have Adam Heggie. He is the Associate Professor of Public Health from App State. So they have helped us, they gathered data and they analyzed the data and we had community surveys and we also gave them that data to analyze. So what we're just saying, this is coming from the residents, it's not just us just thinking about what needs to be done. So they're passionate about their community, they want to see some positive changes, so this is our roots.
And we use the data from the most recent, or from the last Community Health Assessment, which Zach Wallace mentioned earlier as well. So navigating this report, it's 70 pages. We made sure to get one to all of you guys a week in advance, so hopefully you've had a chance to review that. There's four sections. The section that we are going to be talking about is not of these community priorities and recommendations specifically related to county, as the county policymakers that you are. But the report is all four of those sections and we'd be happy to share that electronically with other people in the room. If you do not have a copy, we'd be happy to share that with you as well.
So a little statistics on housing. So 17.2% people in McDowell last year, McDowell County last year went without electricity, water, or heat. So some more social determinants of health. We're just trying to make things better and one thing we're trying to do is, I know the city, as y'all well know, that the city adopted the minimum housing standard. And we're just asking that the county commissioners try to look at something similar to that policy and start giving some, at least some decent housing for people, because we know there's some rundown and there's some landlords that don't take care of their property and we're just trying to help. And we're just trying to help, uh, give people a better way of life.
And that, uh, minimum housing standard policy for the, that the city passed is in that document that you guys have, if you want to refer to it, just to, as a starting point, again. So, for transportation, um, transportation is a barrier, we all know that. But we're fortunate that we have a transportation department now, and we know it's just getting started, and we know it's in its infant stages, and it's got a lot of room to grow. Um, some recommendations would be build sheltered transportation stops for current and future routes, um, and expand those routes to the weekend, uh, and, and some later hours. I know we've talked to many people that, um, need transportation to and from work, but they work the 12-hour shifts, and that's hard for them, because our transportation department currently closes at 5:00. Um, so, we've been explaining that, um, supply meets demand. So, the more people that demand it, and more people that ride it, maybe that can happen. But that, those are some recommendations. One quote related to transportation is also in the, the packet. "Challenges related to transportation include families living in remote areas that can't get to public transportation spots or within the timeframe that they work. Any barrier limits access to healthcare facilities, healthy foods, healthy activities, work, and school." And that was a direct quote from a resident.
So, uh, childcare, create an early childhood education and development fund. We know that children are our future, and we need to start investing more in them. And, uh, I know some parents, as, go back to transportation, and they can always get to the public library or programs at the school. So, it's kind of like intertwined, so if we can start just thinking more about how we can develop our young people, I think it will be a better calendar.
So, with food and farming, um, some recommendations that are included here. Prioritize food and farming as an economic driver for the county. We know it is. $46,000 of direct-to-consumer sales in the county in 2015, I believe. Does that sound right, Molly? I believe it was 2015 from the infographic. Um, and there's 334 farms in McDowell County. That's a lot. So, we prioritize that as an economic driver, that's a win. Conduct an economic impact study and local food action plan to invest and grow the local food economy. Replicate the 10% campaign and create a buyer list for government officials. The 10% campaign is basically committing to spending 10% of your existing food dollars locally. We've got 334 farms. And support a percentage of the operating and programmatic budget of the Foothills Food Hub. I will let Heather Edwards speak more to that when she gets up here. ... budget of the Foothills Food Hub. I will let Heather Edwards speak more to that when she gets up here.
So, food insecurity, another. Heather, to be continued. But we, uh, encourage development of a grocery store co-op that provides local foods at affordable prices. Engage our corner stores, such as the Dollar Stores, the Dollar Generals, to provide healthier food. Maybe even, uh, partner with Manor to do pop-up markets, maybe out in North Cove at the fire station, where people may not, uh, get the healthy food that they need. And support sustainability and beautification efforts of community gardens. And this picture you see, um, is the groundbreaking of the Keeping the Fresh Community Garden. And the city, uh, the mayor was there, and Steve Bush from, from, uh, Chamber. And, uh, we have a great partnership with them, uh, and they have provided, uh, mulch. The city mulched the whole bank last year, and it was probably two, two truckloads, at least, of what they put down there. So, we're just trying to see how we can partner with and make beautification efforts, uh, for the whole county. So, I mean, it's not just about West Marion, not about Marion East, it's about the whole county.
So, for active living, um, recommendations include, implement the recommendation from the County Recreation Plan, which you guys were in, in year five with that. Support the creation of a recreational facility in Marion East. There's conversations going on now. I encourage you guys to find out more about the Marion East Recreational Complex and the Dreamers who were planning that. Support efforts to create a community center in West Marion, long overdue. This community deserves this. Support efforts in West Marion to build a walkway over the 221 Bypass Bridge that was promised 25 years ago and never happened.
By the state, right.
By the state. Work with the local school, school district to adopt an open community use policy for playgrounds and tracks at the schools. Ensure parks are accessible by the, um, disability community. And just as a couple of facts, just to really bring this to life. Obesity impacts 34.2% of McDowell County residents. That's a lot. So likewise, physical inactivity impacts 33.6% of McDowell County residents. If you can't get to someplace where you can exercise, or, or walk, or do something, how, how do you go about getting physical activity? And some of that goes back to these other social determinants of health, transportation, childcare. It, it, it's all intertwined. But I will tell you that, a, as a very active family, there is a need in our outlying areas in the county for more active living spaces.
How many is that? How many of that is youth? McDowell County used to have one of the highest obesity.
These were adults, I just stated.
Oh, okay.
These were adult statistics.
Okay.
Okay, youth engagement. And, uh, at this time, I want to introduce to some people Danny Ellis from Youth Empowerment Solutions. So, uh, he works with, uh, the Community Engagement and Alexis Walkins. Uh, and they're working on the county-wide mentorship and youth pro, empowerment program. Uh, they establish Youth and Young Advisory Commission. Also, they have a couple of their youth here tonight. Could y'all stand up? So, what we're, we're asking, you know, um, I commend, first of all, the Health Coalition, because they have a youth advisor on their board. And maybe, um, and then sometime in the near future, the county would consider having some youth come in, maybe have some focus groups or some listening sessions with the youth, just to see, you know, what, how they're feeling. Because, uh, one of the, uh, we did a survey last year with over 500 students, uh, middle and high school, and the number one issue was stress and bullying. So, that's what, uh, uh, we're trying to get together, not trying to reinvent the wheel, come together with other mentorship programs, and come together and see how we can do it countywide and where the kids, uh, won't be left behind. Also, host the middle, middle health first aid training for teachers and community members. Uh, host the racial equity training for teachers and the community, even county commissioners. I think we all can benefit from this, because we have been through the training, and it was truly eye-opening to us. It's, it's a, it's, it's a, it's a rough training, but it's a good training. And, uh, so last, uh, week, we hosted a conflict mediation training at the Police Department with the Conflict Mediation Place, the Mediation Center out of Asheville. We had three of the, um, policemen, we had the Chief of Police, Rusty Jenkins, and Jamie Hockevo, who, uh, stayed all day with the training. We had tried to get the sheriff, but, uh, they're shorthanded, so they couldn't send anybody. So, uh, we're not trying to always come to the county and ask for something. There's some things we can offer the county also.
So, for substance use disorder, um, allot resources to support local agencies on an annual basis to address this complex challenge. Uh, Zach Wallace spoke to it perfectly earlier. Uh, this is just something we all just need to continuously work on.
So, economic development. Develop a shared vision for growing outdoor recreation sector by bringing multiple stakeholders to the table. Prioritize investment in rural broadband infrastructure. Support living wage salary initiatives with city employees and county employees. Partner with the City of Marion Growing Entrepreneurs Program, the Chamber of Commerce, and Old Fort Chamber of Commerce to provide educational opportunities for small business entrepreneurs. So, um, one thing with our community garden, we hired, uh, 10 youth last year, and we paid them, it was like $8 an hour, a little bit above the minimum wage. And, uh, we just seen how it was a relief to the parents that the, you know, their children are out there in, you know, they got to, first of all, learn how to work, build some entrepreneurial skills, and plus, uh, make some money while they were doing it. And one, one of the great things we did for our stu, uh, youth last year is we, uh, took a educational trip. So, it was a, it was 11 youth and seven adults, and we went to, um, Montgomery. No, we started, well, we went to Tennessee, the Highlander Research Center. Then we went to, um, Birmingham to the Civil Rights Institute. And then we went to New Orleans, and we spent a couple of days letting them have fun, doing swamp tours, city tours. Then we come up to the Legacy Museum in Montgomery, uh, and the Litcher Museum. And then we ended up the next day in, um, Atlanta at the Coca-Cola Factory. So, we had some fun, we had some touching moments, and you know, the kids, these are things they, it was a once-in-a-lifetime trip. Uh, we partnered with, uh, Mission Health. They gave us, uh, funds to also, with our, uh, grant funds. So, we, uh, they didn't cost the kids nothing, and they got to taste new food and experience new, experience new culture. But we just trying to do something different for our youth, and just make them see there's a different world out there, but they don't have to leave Marion to do it.
So, public safety. Um, these are some recommendations. Set up speed monitoring sites at high-traffic areas in Marion East. Sign the Joint Statement of Unity. Um, this is also for newer county commissioners, as well as, um, county commissioners have it on for a few years. Establish a partnership between the schools and community forums to host community conversations to address bullying, as we addressed, as we mentioned earlier, is a, a big problem for our youth. Publicly share that local law enforcement is not directly involved in federal immigration and customs enforcement efforts. Develop a plan with the school system to offer guidance to teachers and counselors on how to support students and parents separated by immigration and customs enforcement issues. Decrease license checks where the immigrant community lives, learns, works, play, prays, and plays. And share know-your-rights materials at the sheriff's office and county offices. If I can ask you guys to look in your, your report here to page 48. This was a question that was asked as part, as, as part of some focus group data that was collected. Generally speaking, what is your trust level with the following groups? And the last two here at the bottom, or the last three even, um, but specifically the last two, Africans-Americans or blacks, um, and Hispanics or Latinos. Those numbers are not as far apart as, say, for example, up at the top, when the police in your local community. So, what this data is illustrating is that we have a lot of work to do to increase our understanding of issues related to diversity, equity, and inclusion. I think that strides have been made, but I think we've got work to do. Um, and these were, these were not our answers, these were answers of, of groups, actually at Grace Community Church, as part of a focus group. So, we, we definitely, we have work in front of us. So, call to action. What we're hoping you do is adopt this plan as just a roadmap to guide investments, resources, and community development strategies by local government leaders. We know that you're already doing some of these things, and, and that's great. So, we, we hope to just partner with you to find out more how we can ask the questions that you guys need to know from county residents. How can we work together to, and make you the, a well-informed board? And how can we share some of these resources, to Zach Wallace's point earlier, share all these resources with our county residents? Um, host city council, county commissioner, and Board of Autobots meetings at the community forums. We've already seen city council do that with Marion East and with West Marion, highly successful. People really enjoyed being able to interact with their elected officials in their neighborhood. Hear updates from leadership of the community forums on a quarterly basis. We'd be happy to come do a report to you four times a year, two times a year, whatever makes the most sense. And support efforts to streamline communication channels, so that the residents are aware of resources, events, and county-wide, community-wide meetings, um, related to these reports' priorities.
And we appreciate your time and given the consideration. We just want you to know that we're here for the long haul, this is not a fly-by-night type of thing. We've seen the success of the West Marion Forum. And Marion East and Old Fort's taking off. And this is our community, we love it, and we just want to see how we can make it better with everybody, not just the select few.
Thank you, guys. Any questions?
We got, we got a host of material here. We appreciate that, that's good, good information. All right, at this time, let's move on to our next appointment item. This will be, um, our 6:15 appointment, the Foothills Food Hub update. Heather Edwards, uh, is at the podium, so the floor is yours.
This will be a little bike reading for you this week.
Thank you.
So, thank you so much. Thank you for your time and allowing me to come and, and introduce. Maybe some of you already know quite a bit about it. I've seen the, at least one of your faces at every meeting, and I, I appreciate, um, all the involvement from everyone on this, uh, from these county commissioners in talking about food, whether it's Food Council or the KB Reynolds food discussions that we did there. So, thank you so much for letting me be here and talk a little bit about it. This is a matter that's near and dear to my heart. I'm now currently the project developer for the Foothills Food Hub, um, but I've been in this work as a volunteer for probably the last four or five years. Um, whatever Molly said we should probably do, I was like, well, let's go ahead and do it. So, I've been in food work for a while with her. So, give me a quick, am I hitting this thing? Hit the down button, you see? I don't have my glasses on, okay. So, a little bit of history, um, for folks in the room, about half of you have heard this already. So, a lot of folks in the, in the. That few rows already know the story. Uh, but certainly for the county commissioners, um, why, how did we get here? Why did we even think we needed a Foothills Food Hub? Um, maybe you've seen a little bit about us in the news, McDowell News covered us just last Sunday, which was a great article. Thank you. Um, Mountain Express covered us as well. So, know that this didn't just start recently. There was actually probably about four years ago, led again by Molly, Molly Sandfoss, a food system assessment, where we all sat down and said, she pulled together folks from across the community. I was honored to be part of that group. We talked about what are our, um, what, what are we doing? What do we have already in terms of opportunities that we can change and improve? What are our assets? What are we already doing pretty well? Um, and from that, we decided we really needed a, a true council. So, we developed the McDowell Local Food Advisory Council, so we could focus on these issues on a regular basis. And I was honored to be able to chair that council the first year. Um, and from there, all the, all this discussion and all this recognizing, there's lots of work to do. Um, what, how do we get started? Um, and the, the ideas that kept coming through is that maybe we need a brick-and-mortar solution to some of these food issues. And so a feasibility study was conducted with the help of cave, money from KB Reynolds and community foundations of Western North Carolina, to say, what would it take to actually build something that would deal with some of the issues that we're talking about? And from that was recommended that we need a project developer to get us started. So, moving through here. So, what were some of the things? Some of the pieces that came out of it in terms of, what does our community truly need to have a strong food system? And the first was, how do we, I want to go kind of backwards here, but how do we support our farmers? Um, as Ginger shared, a lot of numbers with you already, and you'll see the infographic in your, in your folder there, that we have a number of farmers that would like to expand what they're doing. They need more markets. They need to be able to, how do they get more of the food out of the field and actually into the hands of the consumer? So, we thought, let's build a place where they can store that food, so it can get into a, maybe a wholesale situation with our good partners of the Tractor in Yancey County, um, a wash line, so that they could prepare that food in a way that could be sold at the farmer's market and other, and other retail places. So, give them a place that that could actually happen. And on the other end of this, the folks that are food insecure in this county, we're going to see the numbers in a minute, but I know we don't have a lot of time. That maybe, um, if you were sitting at a table, let's say, at the, um, one of the fairs, one of the Bigfoot, Bigfoot Festival, and I'd think of that one right offhand, and you see four kids in front of you, one of them is living in a home that is food insecure. So, know that you've got 10 kids playing in those jumping castles and crazy things that I have to stand in line for, that at least two of them are going home tonight, and they, their, their folks don't know where our meal's coming from this week. So, we know that this is an issue, and we know it needs to be addressed. And we've got so many good folks out there that are doing the good work at food pantries, whether that's in schools, churches, all kinds of places, that are trying to do their very best to serve the folks who need it most. How can we serve them? So, the idea was, let's put something together where Manor, our wonderful partner, I just spent a couple of hours with them on their council, um, where they could, they could deliver the food to us, and folks like, that work at the Nebo, or West Marion, or any of those pantries can just make the trip over to one location here in McDowell County without having to keep going across the mountain. And if we put this in the same place, we can get some of that farmer food into our pantry too. So, it's not just the shelf-stable stuff, but actually getting them fresh, local food that's the best food for them. And then on top of that, a teaching kitchen. Lots of detail in your packet, and we'll share a little bit more about it. But a teaching kitchen would, would provide a way to help folks that are food insecure or otherwise any of us that say, what do you do with an eggplant? We know we can grow it, and they're delicious, but how do you cook it? Um, how do we get the food in the hands of the youth, so that they know how to cook? We start them off early. How do you cook food that will help you with the fact that you have diabetes? How do we make sure that we're able to send you home with food, not only that it's good for you, but it's going to help shift, shift health determinants too? And then commercial kitchens. So, one of the big things that came through in the feasibility study was, uh, were folks that, like farmers, entrepreneurs, people that had, maybe wanted to do a food truck, truck, and wanted to start out. people that had maybe wanted to do a food truck and wanted to start out, but they didn't have a place to actually prepare their food. So if you have a commercial kitchen, that gives you the ability to make that salsa that's your grandmother's recipe and it's the best stuff in three counties. But if you don't have a place to make it, then you can't really sell it to Ingalls or even to the farmer's market. You need a place to actually prepare that and folks needed it. So the commercial kitchen was in response to that. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. So clicking through. The ideas, we've got these great ideas. We recognize who we need to serve. The food council is doing that all the time. What's a brick and mortar solution to make it solid? So in, in the feasibility study, we went looking for who's a great partner to make this happen. And Nebo Crossing thankfully raised their hands and said, we can do that. We just built, we just purchased a hundred thousand plus square foot building. It's a monster, sitting out there near, near McDowell Tech. And they agreed and just recently we have a formal signed lease for fifteen years with no cost. We can be there nine thousand square feet to build this without any, with now Nebo Crossing charging us a dollar. In addition to that, they've said, we recognize, as we had conversations about how we needed to really serve people now and how we're not going to have a ton of money starting out and so power and things like that, we're just not going to have the money for. They agreed. They saw that we were mission-aligned, that this was something that they wanted to do as well in terms of serving community and said, let's do this. A thousand dollars a month for the next four years to make sure that you can do what you need to do while you're raising funds. So incredibly generous. We, we couldn't do this without Nebo Crossing. And I think, um, you can certainly see that in terms of whether it's going to be operational or emergency food. And then for the long-term in terms of that fifteen-year lease, it's huge. That will help, will go a long way towards showing our funders that we have local buy-in. So we're going to skip through this because this is a crazy layout and I know we don't have a lot of time and it's in your packet. But as you can see, just really quick, pantry area, this is going to be state-of-the-art space. This is not going to be something we threw together. We really want to make this something that's sustainable and can last us for the long haul. So you're looking at a pantry space that's about two thousand square feet, a wash line about the same, a teaching kitchen that's a little bit under, under that, and then the Cadillac, the commercial kitchen. So that we can make sure, not only can we, can we do what we promise we do to community, for the community, that they can come in and use the kitchen to do value-added product development, that they can use that kitchen. Farmers can use the kitchen as well to continue to, to use all that they're growing. But then also this would be in the city center side of Nebo Crossing. So they would want to need part of that kitchen to actually serve at a restaurant manner or the coffee shop, which is great because that starts to help us with sustainability. So we could actually make money off of the commercial kitchen because it's not just being used by farmers. And not just being, being used by entrepreneurs, but used by anybody that's going to come into this huge space that wants to eat food. So that again goes a long way towards sustainability when you're not trying to depend on people that thought they might want to make salsa, right? So phase one, and I jokingly call it phase one A. This is where we're at today. We saw that there was a handful of programs in our community, and that's growing every day, but a handful that raised their hand and said, we need to provide food. We need to do it yesterday. We don't have a food budget. It wasn't part of our, the grant that they got, it wasn't part of what they already have. So the first is the Community Care Paramedic Program. These are the great folks in the EMS that go in and recognize that there's other needs in the home besides what they just called there to serve. So if they're finding that there's no food in the home, they were actually going to, to the grocery stores and using their own money to make sure that there was food in that home when they left. So we want to make sure that we can partner with them and be able to provide that emergency food when they need it. We've already started to do that just in the last few weeks. As they're going through community and finding people that are living outdoors and people that are living in spaces that really aren't habitable. That they need food today. So we're, we're serving them now. Also with the re-entry council, Danny and his team and I just went through some food handling training. There's a fancy word for it and I can't think of it, but went through training with Manna so that we can have them come in and get emergency food when they need it as well. So these folks that have been mentioned already, coming out of incarceration, coming out into community, they don't typically come out with a, with a great plan sometimes. So they need to be able to, to eat as they get their feet underneath them and figure out what their next steps are. So we want to be able to help Danny with that. Also with the Life Works Program, they already actually have a Manna partnership, but they needed space and we said, of course. So that's something we're working on now. Again, Nebo Crossing has been kind enough to sort of portion off a little space for us and give us some, um, storage. And then we got a freezer that a very nice person helped, helped me move not too long ago so that we could be ready to receive that food. So that's what's happened today. Next steps. So multiple grants have been submitted. This is why my eyes look the way they do. Or we're planning to submit them several just this month. So that's something that we're working on and will continue to work on because this is an expensive project, right? All in, it's 1.3 million dollars to get this built, equipped, everything in. But the nice thing is, we only have to ask once because we already have a sustainability plan. We already have the pieces in place to keep us successful. Fifteen-year lease to begin with. Also, things that we're working on, building partnerships in the county and the region. We've been doing that for a while because as the Foothills Food Hub is part of the McDowell Local Food Advisory Council. And so we've been an active group now for over two years. We've been building those partnerships. So this is just a matter of putting some of these into action, which is really nice to see. Through collaboration, determining how can we make this shift from food, the food insecurity needs, chronic health, um, chronic health conditions, how do we help make community connections? We're also looking, just recently we partnered with Burke County. They got grants, a grant fund, a grant from Resourceful Communities to do an online food hub, which is really groovy and that you can, the farmers can put their food online and then customers can come in, purchase the food, do it all online and then have pickups to come pick the food up. And they can do it now in McDowell and Rutherford, or in, in McDowell and Burke County. So we have been their, part of their pilot project, which I'm really excited. They were so excited about what we were doing in terms of our food council work and our food hub work that they wanted us to be part of their pilot project. So I'm really proud of that. And then of course, begin construction. I need to break ground now, today. I'm waiting on news whether we can get some pretty considerable sized coolers in a partnership. We just went through with a grant with Tractor up in Yancey County. We're hoping to hear soon whether that will move forward. And if it does, we need to put these things somewhere. So we're really anxious to get the capital funding done so that we can put this equipment in place. And then some of those first steps will be adding the coolers to the space to support those farmers. We need to help them grow. We need to do it soon. Farmers are on a different kind of schedule than the rest of us, right? We need to know, seeds should have already been purchased. We got to get starters in now and then be thinking about plowing, right? So we need to be thinking about this on a, on their timetable. And then also of course, adding coolers and storage for pantries to distribute local produce, gleaned and donated so that we make it easy for the folks that are doing the good work and have been doing it for years for, as a volunteer. We need to start supporting those folks more. Where am I? There we go. So what kind of shifts are created? We already talked some about this, but all kinds of things that this hub will do. It's not just a, it's not just a building where you're going to put food in. It's a place where we're going to bring folks together, where we, where we actually see this collaboration come to fruition. So connecting farmers, they see expansion. They're able to diversify crops if they want to. They've got more markets that they can actually sell to. Pantries are saving time and money. They become more efficient in how they can actually serve the people who need it most. Partnering with Extension to offer food preservation classes, partnering with Mission Health, HCA, to do hands-on cooking classes. McDowell Tech has already raised their hand and said, this is a great idea in terms of being able to offer classes there. Mission Life Ministries, how can we partner with their mentor group and get some of those folks in the teaching kitchen to give them skills and then in on-the-job training in the commercial kitchen so that they're serving as well? So there's lots of, there's lots of partnership and collaboration happening already. But did I mention, I need to break ground. We need some construction money. That's going to be important in a second. Cooking local food, additional fundraising opportunities. I just want to mention to the group and anybody listening on these video things, if it's there. Sure. Then we're going to start a, um, community fundraising campaign starting in March. So I'm reaching out to bars and restaurants and. Folks in the community that are interested in supporting this. And Rossi over at Spillway raised his hand first. So the week of March the seventeenth, ten percent of everything he sells will go to the Foothills Food Hub. So if you see him, you just give him a big hug. I'm trying not to cry telling you. But he's amazing. So I get to put that line in the sand when I ask everybody else too. But this has been just a great, oh, people have been so supportive of this work. So I just wanted to mention that really quick. So Ginger already stole my thunder on this. What's important to our farmers. Three hundred and thirty-four farms in McDowell, twenty-four thousand nine hundred and three acres of farms in McDowell. And then when it gets interesting, only four thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight acres are farmed. So as we know, some of us better than, than others, that we're aging as farmers. So we've got more land sometimes than we can work. And I say we because I'm a want-to-be farmer. I have a code, but you know, I've got twelve acres and I might farm a third of, or a third of an acre. So I understand how that can be, but if you're trying to make a living on it, the more we can do to support these folks to actually get more food into the market, we should do it. And something, just a recent survey that Molly and her team were thankfully put online for us is that eighty-three percent of farmers are interested in increasing their sales. So they're not sitting still. They actually do want to grow. And ninety-one percent share that sometimes or more often than not, they had more product than demand. We know that there's demand out there. We just have to give them the market channel to get it out there. They've got the best stuff. Our farmers grow the best food for us. That's it.
We agree.
Yeah. All right. So let's keep that in mind. So already shared this number with you. Almost twenty-six percent of children in McDowell live in households that are food insecure. Fifty-nine percent of children live in low or poor income homes. Fifteen percent of our total population is food insecure. I think that number might even be a little bit low. But we know that there's an issue. Hopefully that's not new news to everyone. I know these numbers can be overwhelming for folks that aren't number people, but can, keep that image in your mind. When you're at Walmart or you're at Mountain Glory and you see four kids in front of you that are just randomly walking by, one of them probably didn't get a meal this week. Why this is important to our economy. If I can't hit you there, if it's not important to say we need to help the least of us, then let me, let me talk to your wallet. That for folks that are food insecure, that translates to a whole lot of money being spent on their healthcare. So these are average numbers. This is looking across the nation. I don't have that, they don't let me look at your, at McDowell data this closely. But the food experience, that folks that are experiencing food insecurity have an extra eight, over eighteen hundred dollars in healthcare expenditures each year. So let that sink in. Of those twenty-six percent of kids, or the fifteen percent, again, I think the number's low as I heard Ginger and then Paula sharing. That's an extra eighteen hundred dollars just on top what we're spending on folks because they already have this, this mark in terms of social determinants of health. So this is not something that if we just leave alone, one, it's going to get better. And then if we just leave alone. Expect people to pull themselves up by their bootstraps, it's going to get cheaper. So something to think about. And then if we get specific to some of these health issues, the extra healthcare expenditures are particularly high among, I'm reading it because it's quoted, among high insecure adults, food insecure adults with heart disease. Five thousand dollars more. If they have diabetes, four thousand dollars more. Hypertension, two thousand. So when you compare those folks to people that, who actually know where all their meals are coming from this week, it's incredibly expensive for them to stay in that space. So how do we get there? So what I'm asking of the commissioners is to consider all the numbers I've shared with you, where we know how, how much we know, or how important we know it is. To support the farmers, to support the food insecure, to support the children who are going without food. There are people in this room that could stand up right now and tell you stories that will leave us all crying about how they put food in their pockets during snack time because they got to eat, but their little brother who's in preschool didn't. So we know that this is an issue. So what I'm asking the county commissioners to consider is that to match Nebo Crossing. I just had an email come in today. Y'all know I'm emotional. She has been paying it out of her pocket, two hundred dollars to put a food program together for kids in her school that are considered homeless, part of the McKinney-Vento program. She just needs two hundred dollars to get this program off the ground and she has no budget to do it. I said, we'll find it or I'll find somebody to pay for it. We'll do this. We need money in a budget that we can do things that support our community that are food insecure. So I'm asking the county commissioners to match the budget of Nebo Crossing. To do that, or match the, the giving that they're doing. Also, hold on to your seats. I'm asking the county to fund us at seventy-five thousand to start construction. That's a lot of money. That's a drop in the bucket. That, what did you say earlier with that? Carson House? That's nothing compared to the rest of this budget, but.
You listen good.
My dad, he's talking well. But it is incredibly important that we get started now. Also, this is a, this would be considered a fifty percent match to what I'm going, Wednesday, I think Alpo will go, and I go to meet with K.B. Reynolds and I'm asking them for a hundred and fifty immediately to help match this. So this gets us off the ground. If we could get seventy-five from you and a hundred and fifty from K.B. Reynolds, this puts us very close to having at least the farm, the pantry and part of the teaching kitchen done. And I'm working on that from somebody else. So we would get very close to having ground broken so that we could actually start moving coolers in and we could actually start supporting people now, which is when we need it. So thank you very much for your time. I hope you will consider this. I think it's important, not just for the food council, not just for the food hub, but everybody in this room.
Thank you so much. All right. Let's move to our next item on our agenda. This will be, uh, new business item G off of county-owned property. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir. Let's have.
Yes, sir. Last month, you approved the disposal of three lots that were tax foreclosures. And we have three more lots in your memo, but one of those has to come out, the Wild Ridges Lot. There's a, uh, procedural issue we had with that one. But we do have the Grayson Street Lot and the Matilda Avenue Lot. That we have offers for in the hands. And again, they're very low offers, much like last month. And typically, we wouldn't even bring these to the board as low as they are. Both have issues. So again, Wild Ridges Lot will be considered next month, possibly. But the Grayson Street Lot, uh, do not have the memo in there, but I've sent you a packet with all of the county-owned properties for you to look at. And I highlighted in that packet that the Grayson Street Lot was a foreclosure, we think from about fifty years ago, if not longer. This is a lot that was platted, uh, but not developable. Too many syllables maybe, but there's no road access. There's some topography issues. So it really has, obviously after fifty-plus years of lack of use, it has. No benefit to the county and it would benefit us. Staff's recommendation would be to return it to the tax rolls, even at that, that amount. The other lots, Matilda Avenue, uh, Mr. Walker was on the board when the county began the, what we called the Eastfield Sewer Project. Mr. McPeters came in, I think in the midst. But that was a project where the county, uh, it was actually the first project I really worked on here. We connected about three hundred homes, the Stump Town Community, Eastfield Community, to City Sewer, through some bond monies. Massive project, took about two years to do, but one of the lots. We had a lot of easements in that community for the sewer lines, manholes, et cetera. We had to buy this lot, uh, about this amount, I believe, because there were about three or four sewer lines that came in. Right over top of the lot. So you really couldn't honestly build a house on it. And so it has very minimal value, but the person that bid on this knows that and apparently doesn't care. So again, this will return it back to the tax rolls, both of these two lots.
Okay. Comments, questions by board members?
Moving to accept the offer.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye in opposed, like sign. Okay. Uh, let's move to item D under new business. This will be the change of independent auditors. And, uh, the firm that has done our audit for so many years, no longer will be doing government audits. And that's, they did a tremendous job. Johnson, Price and Sprinkle, we're going to miss them, but Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
That's right. Uh, Ms. Bell, uh, finance, county's finance director and I met with representatives from, uh, Johnson, Price and Sprinkle, uh, about a week ago. And, um, honestly thought it would be a conversation about our recent audit and how we can work on next years. And they, I guess, dropped a bombshell on us that they will no longer do governmental auditing. There's a lot of changing for, uh, governmental standards, uh, local government commission regulations, et cetera. And it's just honestly more, they're saying that, uh, they can handle. And so they wanted to give us notice now so we can take the next few months to find a firm that will do this work and that will allow that to come back to the board for review and approval. So this isn't on our own for us to figure out what to do. The local government commission, again, which is part of the state treasurer's office. They have a RFP form letter, essentially a template that we've already pulled down and started to customize and that we will send out to all. Registered firms in North Carolina. We've been getting information on firms from our neighbors, City of Marion, et cetera. We've been getting information on firms from our neighbors, City of Marion, et cetera. And so, it's, it is bittersweet, because JPS has done our audit for a very long time, they're a local company, and they've done a great job, but again, we've, it's time to move on. So, we wanted to make sure the board was aware that that process will kick off, and we will definitely, obviously, work with the board on the selection of a new firm.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wood. At this time, we'll move to item...
Sis, a comment.
Well, sis, a comment, it's not aye, just a number six on our agenda. Sis, number five. Okay, at this time, we'll move to our next item, one of the last items, reports and communications from staff and/or board members to each other. The clerk to the board does an outstanding job keeping us updated about hourly on, on where we need to be, and we appreciate that. You did great.
Thanks. If I can mention just a couple of updates, public interest. Mr. Chairman, two projects that we're working with, with the City of Marion, I thought it'd be just a brief update, not even a general, really, but...
One would be the sewer line, didn't plan this, but the sewer connection that will be made to the existing animal shelter, has been on septic, will be converted over to sewer as part of that project to extend a sewer line to the new commercial development on 226 South. So, that's an involvement, a 50/50 relationship, partnership with the city, a huge improvement there at our facilities as well. The other project, cooperative project, is the drexel cleanup. City manager told me today that they are working on the contract documents with DH Griffin, which is the contractor for that project, a very reputable demolition company. They have about six subcontractors, so it's taken a while to go through all the legalese, but... The hope is that project will start within the next couple of weeks, once all the contracts, et cetera, are signed, so a great project to clean up that disaster of an area there in that community, so very exciting. And Mr. Lindsey mentioned the meeting next week, talked to the chairman about adjourning to next Monday at 11:30 for a number of things, sort of a workshop. One will be discussing, hearing a presentation about the match program and the, the folks behind that program. Also, we'll hear an update from Mr. Keller on some of the emergency projects going on. There are quite a few in the community, and a few other actionable items. Get adjourned to that when you, you do.
What's the pleasure of the board, as far as adjourning to next Monday?